But Committee of the whole meeting for July 15, 2014, I call this meeting to order and ask the clerks, please call the roll.
Trustee Aaron's here. Cammer.
Here.
Carbonero.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Ranky.
Here.
Shipman.
Here.
President Wallace.
Here. First item on our Committee of the whole meeting is under planning and zoning, trustee Cammer.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight we have a concept plan for Bartlett Point West Two. Petitioner Richard Giarde on behalf of Reliable Materials Corporation of Illinois, RMI, and we have the subject site is east side of Southwind Boulevard, west of, south of West Bartlett Road, and I think we'll let Jim take it over from here.
Thank you, trustee Cammer. The concept plan for Bartlett Point West Two is located on the west end of the Westridge subdivision. This property was originally approved for multifamily townhome development in 2009, with, 2009, '36. It was a 64-unit development approved as a preliminary subdivision and PUD plan. The final development plan obviously was never built. The petitioner, Mr. Giarde, would like to come in and petition the village after his concept review for a 30-lot, single-family detached residential development on the same 8.97 acres. The development proposal would show a minimum lot size of 7,500 square feet, which closely matches our SR4 suburban residence district, which has a 6,000-square-foot lot size, is also very similar to the existing Bartlett Point West subdivision to this one's east. This was approved as part of an annexation agreement and a PUD plan. If the petitioner were to proceed with this plan, he would have to amend both the PUD plan and the annexation agreement to allow this development to occur. He's really only asking for a change in the rear yard setback of 25 feet. This doesn't show it as well. This is probably better. The concept plan shows the front yard at 25 feet, the rear yard at 25 feet. The lots are 60 by 125, and he's showing a comparison between what was approved on the previous townhome with this depiction and the Bartlett Point lots, which are 62 by 135 and have 30-foot rear yards. If the concept was, is approved, he would also ask for a reduction in the public right-of-way to 60 feet rather than 66 feet, and he would link the bike path with the bike path nodes along West Bartlett Road. Would also extend the park, and I'm flipping around here. On the south end, there's an existing park in Kohler Fields. He would want, he would, if the park district would accept this property as in the previous development, he would dedicate a strip of land on the south side of this development to the park district. There's also a tiny sliver of land that the village would ask for additional right-of-way and kind of round out our site right in this corner. It's not working, right there, that would go to the village. So, he's asking for a perimeter buffer on the west side from Southwind Boulevard as part of the concept. This would be landscaped and fenced, as shown on this layout, and primarily he's asking for that because this is a separation. Southwind separates the residential development here. This property would be developed as office, research, or commercial uses. So, he's asking for that buffer. Repurposed surface calculation was, calculated for these lots to ensure compliance with our ordinance. Right now, the comp plan identifies this as mixed-use business park, and if we were to proceed, we would also amend the comp plan for this area. The density is 3.34 dwelling units per acre, which meets our suburban residential density requirements. And the petitioner is here, if you have any questions on him, or if you have any questions of me.
Are there any questions from the board?
Jim, you mentioned the vacant lot to the west, or vacant land, I shouldn't call it a lot, the west.
Yes.
And right now, that's zoned to be commercial of some type?
Every, everything out there, and this might show it better, everything is zoned PD, but this is, in the PD district, the underlying uses are either office, commercial, or industrial. If this picture were a little further west, there's an office building right on Route 25 out there. And so, their hopes is to eventually develop this more in line with that type of use. And this Southwind Boulevard, somewhere, right here, it hasn't been built, but it will, it will provide that separation between the residential and that use.
Are the existing houses there, are they built over the rock quarry that had been filled in as well or not? I mean, the ones that are already up?
Yes. This, this whole area, let me go back to the original slide, and Rich has been around for almost as long as I have.
I earned this gray hair, I mean blond hair.
But this whole subdivision, this is all of Westridge subdivision, and for those of you who've been around for years, this was mined and then reclaimed. And as they mined it, it was reclaimed, and then the homes were built by Centex primarily. Rich's company built this Bartlett Point development, which is on the west end of Westridge, and then his, obviously his plan is, once this is finished to be reclaimed, this will be also built by RMI or your company. Wyndham Deer Point is what Rich's company was.
And we've never had any problems with settling on these areas and that kind of stuff? It's all solid?
No. Some anecdotal history, and just in the school site, when that school site was built, there was a portion of this property that was not mined, and the, and the compaction results from the mining operation was actually better than the compaction results from the unmined portion of the school, and they had to put some extra footings on that. So, the compaction you get from the mining and the way they do it under our ordinance is actually pretty good.
And what's the average square footage of the homes going to be?
The, the homes will be very comparable to the homes that are next door there. So, we expect the price ranges to be between 325 and 400. The, the sizes that we're looking at right now are between 2,500 and 3,200 square feet. And, you know, when you see these, like these center homes right through here, and we were the builder that built this, this is Bartlett Point West next door, and I asked to put this slide up to show you that this is the 20, this has the same front setback that we're, we're seeking here, which is the 25-foot, and this, these homes in the center here were 62 feet wide with the 25-foot and a five-foot side yard easement for the easement itself, and that, we're talking about in the subdivision we're asking for tonight is 60-foot instead of 62, but the 25, and it would have the, basically the S4 requirements, SR4, excuse me. So, I mean, one thing I wanted to mention is, you know, this was a PUD along with the slide that he's shown, showing the townhomes. It's approved, we actually have it final engineered for 64 townhomes on this nine-acre property, and that was the original plan, and it's in the annexation agreement, and that's why we would have to amend the annexation agreement. But over the last eight years, the market isn't there, and the townhomes that are designed and were approved for this were, they're rear, they're rear-loaded, meaning they're courtyard-type of townhomes, so they face townhome to townhome. So, the townhomes themselves are actually, you know, only 10 feet off the property lines here, and they're five- and six-unit buildings, and then the only backyard, since they're back-to-back, was a small balcony over the parking. So, I mean, we really think this is a superior product. There is a market for this today, so, I mean, our plan is if the, if we get a positive on the concept from the, from the board, we plan to move ahead with preliminary and final engineering and then go through the process with the planning commission and so forth, but we do plan to move forward with this now as single family. There's still not a market today for the, for this townhome product in this area. And then, I'm not sure if I answered your final question on what type, but we're looking at, if you looked at the homes in Bartlett Point that existing right now, these homes would be comparable to those homes. That's what we're looking to do. We're kind of extending this over to the next area.
Bartlett Point just has a little bit bigger backyard, is that what you were saying?
Slightly. They, their depth is 130 to 135, I believe, and the depth here is 125. And their rear yard then was 30, minimum, and our rear yard, minimum, we're asking us for 25. So, we're making, we're splitting the difference between there. But when you, if you see that aerial again, if you could go back to the aerial, there's a couple of aerials there. There's one, but you can see they're very substantial when they're, when they're back-to-back, and the 125 feet with, with the 25-foot depth is going to be a, plenty of backyard, it's going to be significant backyard. And to some extent, just with the times, lots are getting a little bit smaller, people are wanting to deal with a little less lawn and...
So, I was going to ask, is that the trend? I mean, we've had, now you're the second builder that's come before us, asking for smaller backyards, and I don't know anything about it. Is that the trend?
Well, it's trend, and Bartlett's becoming an infill type of community. There aren't a lot, there's not a lot of property available. This is a nine-acre site, the sites are smaller a little bit, and so, it's a combination. It's a trend, it's cost, things, the cost kept going up even though the prices didn't go up sufficiently. But on a, on this sized lot, I mean, you can see we're talking about homes that are 2,500 to 3,200 square foot, they're very substantial.
Sure.
Two-story homes.
All right.
How many different models do you have?
Right now, we're looking at four models and a ranch model, and then there would be a couple of elevations. But with 30 homes, you know, we can't do too many model, too many different elevations or models, but we tend to adjust them as the homeowners want.
Well, I understand that this is a concept only, but when I look at Lot 7, and then the, the graphic that depicts the house located on Lot 7, it, it looks an awful lot like it's just sort of shoehorned in there.
All right. I mean, certainly we will take a look at that as we do that. As you say, it is a concept plan, so when we get to preliminary and final engineering, there'd be a lot more detail and tweaking to this various, and, and these homes aren't, you know, they're just concept, obviously, too, so...
All right. It's looked awfully cramped.
All right. Well, we'll certainly take a look at it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would, I would commend the builder, I think, for putting together what looks like a nice, much nicer plan than the townhomes, that's for sure. The reason that I asked about property to the west, Jim, is I think either the board or at least myself should make it clear and on the record that at this point, our plan for that property to the west is commercial and business, because so often is the case, when you get residential people moving in there, the last thing they want moving next to them is commercial and business. And that's what we have planned for that corner. I think it's a good corner for commercial and business at some point, and while I, and I, I think this is a great use, the nine acres that you've got here, and we're not even talking about the property to the west, other than, I think that the, for my purposes, I note on the record that that land is, right now, kind of earmarked for commercial and business development. Other than that, I commend... And I might mention, RMI that owns this also owns all of that property, and their office building, that's their offices, their center, their headquarters, is right there in the corner. You could build us some Marianos, we'd like that. Well, you know, they, they would love that, too. But they, they have no plans for that to be other than commercial. They've...
And that's on the record now?
They're already building it out, well, yes, it is on the record, and it's part of the annexation agreement and everything else, but that is, is clearly their intent. And this is almost a type of transitional, it's a natural break because of Southwind Boulevard, but they have no plans to go across.
Very good, thank you.
Sometimes when we have those transitional uses, we require in the sales trailer that they show the future zoning, where it is. We posted there as well as a disclosure in the contract that the buyers sign, showing what could be around them, so they can't claim that they're surprised if the houses get built before...
Do we have to take the forest off of our materials that we have on?
Well, I don't know.
Right. No, and I agree, Brandon, and we tend to do, we tend to agree with that because we don't want problems later either with the buyers. We've been around a long time, and we're going to be around a long time more, hopefully. If the last recession didn't get us, this one probably, the next one probably won't. So, that's a good idea, and we would plan on doing that type of discussion.
I would just ask the, Jim, if using up this nine acres, does it restrict what we can put into the rest of the empty land that's there? I mean, how much land is left, left?
I think on this southerly piece, it's probably 25 or 30 acres. I don't, let me see if I can, I don't have a shot of it all the way to the corner, but...
I'm assuming that at some point, when it was zoned, the plan commission thought that that would be a really good whole section for business of some sort.
Yeah, this zoning goes all...
So, now we're kind of just switching it?
Exactly. It was, and, and what, what happened is what we did and traded off this portion for the townhomes, is that the same owner brought in this, what is called the Blue Heron Business Park and the Bluff City Park. And so, they brought in more industrial and commercial sites on the north side of West Bartlett Road, and as a, a trade-off, they felt that they needed a transition.
That makes sense.
So, that's, that's what we did.
Okay, that's good information.
And there's some history here. I mean, the plan, this, this was a master plan here on this whole area as part of the PUD, and this is residential, approved and engineered and everything else. The only difference is it's 64 townhomes now, and we're asking to change it to 30 single-family. It's not changing any of the rest of the plan with the commercial or retail or anything else in the area.
Sure. Well, and most importantly, I was interested in the original plan commission's ideas of how much business we can put in that area of town, but I understand from the explanation. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. President.
This is going to be King County?
Yes, when, when this is done.
So, we're actually going to have finally citizens from King County living in Bartlett?
We'll have residents.
Exactly. Because, that's good. Have to get a new polling place for them.
Are there any other questions by the board?
Conyers?
Huh? You'd like to comment to them?
Yes. I, I have to tell you right, right now, before it goes to the board, I think the concept plan is good. However, I cannot, I cannot get past the 25-foot rear yard, period. It's not enough. That's it.
With that said, though, would it be the consensus of the board to give a favorable review of this project?
Yes.
In concept, yeah.
Well, then we would hope that the petitioner would do a full submittal.
All right. We'll plan to do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you. And that would be all I have for this evening.
Thank you, Chairman Cammer. Next item on our Committee of the whole meeting agenda is under Finance Committee, Chairman Ranky.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have only one item, the Intergovernmental Pool Benefit Cooperative, which promises to be an enthralling presentation on how the village can save money on its health insurance costs.
Hey. Did you say enthraling?
Yes. So, with that, I'll turn it over to the staff.
Thank you.
I can assure you it's important.
One of the things that we've been talking about is different ways to lower our costs relative to health insurance, and we have talked about the need to go back and review our eligibility to participate in the IPBC pool, and we did that. And we spent some time with the folks who run it, and they've given us some numbers, and clearly it is a really important thing for us to take a look at. And so, I would like to introduce David Cook and Greg Allman, who are here to make the presentation, to tell you about how the system works and how it's going to save us some money, and welcome, gentlemen.
Do we get popcorn with this presentation?
No.
I tried to bring some, I was told not to.
Who told you?
My name is Brad Allen, I'm the senior partner at Allen, that handles the Intergovernmental Pool.
Personnel Benefit Cooperative. I've been called enthralling before, so that's not the first time. Thank you very much. I'm assisted by Mr. Dave Cook, who's the executive director of the IPBC, and we will, I think the enthralling part is, I think when we're done talking about what we can do for you in the next four years, you'll understand how this is going to make about a $2 million difference in your costs pretty quickly. So, first things first, we did provide to staff a quote to join the IPBC, not changing our current benefit plan, not changing your provider, Blue Cross Blue Shield, at a cost of less than 1% to join the pool. The pool exists, consists of 76 other municipal entities that basically surround Bartlett. You're one of the only ones that's not in it right now. What it's, what's going to change for you, instead of being a customer of Blue Cross Blue Shield, you'll be an owner-partner of a company that's solely run by municipal entities and by the finance directors, the managers, and the HR people. So, when you ask about who's seen this and how lucky Dave and I are to work on this thing, is 76 different boards have vetted this, 76 managers, 76 finance directors, and 76 HR people. So, it's been looked at by a lot of people. And part of the reason why it's successful, when you look at the partners involved, the primary vendors, it's not just Gallagher Benefit Services as a consultant. I think we're the least of them. We use Ansel Glenc and Stuart Diamond, who basically wrote the Illinois Intergovernmental Act as a lead legal resource. We use Lauderbach and Amon, an esteemed accounting firm, to handle all the money, because Gallagher doesn't handle it. We use the Sickich Group to do the auditing, which is one of the premier companies for those kind of services, and we use the Illinois Government Finance Officers Association to record-keep for us. So, that and with the executive director, we're able to make those kind of, we're able to run this company in a most efficient way. We're not rookies at this. Gallagher's run this cooperative for 34 years. We run other cooperatives for school districts, community colleges. This is not something new to us. We're not novices. This pool's been around a long time, thanks to some of the people around here. You did receive a little bit of our presentation. It does show you who is in the house. Rather than go through and read everything out to you, which I would not do and insult everyone's intelligence, I, I just want to draw your attention to a couple things in here. We are a financial vehicle, it's not a benefit plan. The village will always retain the right to keep Blue Cross Blue Shield if they want, switch to United Healthcare if they want, design different plans if they want, and evolve. What we, what we get from the carriers is complete plan design freedom. Dealing with 76 communities, 11,000 employees, 30,000 members, we're able to leverage a lot of power and a lot of resources to get them to do what we want them to do. What the Village of Bartlett has is not going to be what Hanover has, what, what Schaumburg has, what Hoffman Estates has, so you'll always retain the power within staff here to do whatever they want. My job is not to tell you yes or no, or to tell staff yes or no, it's to tell them pro and con. We're conservatively funded and reserved. I've yet to meet a finance director who says, hey, I'm liberal, I want to spend. So, since finance directors basically run the show at this pool, that kind of, that kind of mentions that. We're fully transparent. You'll get to see your numbers in and out every single month, and we've displayed that to, to staff as well. We're not a one-size-fits-all, we're not a quoting machine. We want communities to believe that an intergovernmental solution is better than doing the same thing over and over again, because I think Einstein called that the definition of insanity. Yeah. When you look at the page in front of you that says IPBC average PPO rate history, that's what you're buying. You're buying that kind of stability. We've been in the single digits for the last nine years, and if you look at the last three years, and that's not a misprint for 2014, '15, that is a negative 3.3. If you look at the last three years, we've averaged 2.5% adjustments. Now, using the rule of 72 on how money doubles, if you join the pool with these kind of numbers, and I have no reason to believe we're not going to be there again, because we use a rolling 24 months to do everything, so we're going to be between 0 and negative 3.3, then we'll be between 0 and whatever number comes again, and 0 again. So, using just our 2.5 in the last couple of years, your costs wouldn't double for, pardon my bad math, I only had one math class at ISU, 22 years? Is that about right? So, if you have an average 8%, which I believe that Village Bartlett has had, your costs double in nine years. So, talk about making millions of dollars of difference. It's going to do exactly that. Plus, we take the risk and profit that Blue Cross makes, and we give it back to you in that average dividend. We turn the tables on them because they let us run this program completely self-funded. And with self-funded, there's a little risk, but I'll tell you how we mitigate that risk in a couple pages. The most important page, I think, to Bartlett is the page that says individual five-year, member five-year history. It's what I refer to as the anti-mutual fund page. You all know how the commercials say past performance doesn't guarantee future results? Not here. Because what you notice here is that IPBC in the last five years has averaged 4.28% if you look at the bottom. Every community that has a yellow arrow has been within three points of that pool average. And everybody that has a green arrow has outperformed. So, when Mr. Martinovich puts a 5% in his planning budget for the next five years, he's not going to be wrong, because the Village of Bartlett will perform just like the IPBC. That's what this shows. You're not only going to have small, single-digit adjustments, but you'll also have dividend return. So, outside of slowing down the rate of change and making millions of dollars difference on the back end, we're going to take the risk and profit that Blue Cross has taken from the Village of Bartlett and return that back to you as a dividend. The next page kind of covers the average HMO rate history, which is pretty similar, but the keys to our kingdom and why we're successful and why 76 communities don't finger-point is the next page. What we do is we turn catastrophic claims into a fixed cost. We give everyone a self-insured retention for a claim under column C, $35,000 a year. Right now, I'm pretty sure Blue Cross has never defined that for you, where your self-insured retention is in your program, because they don't like to disclose that. That's the way to keep you off balance, so your broker can tell you, hey, you had a good year, but everyone ran out to the doctor or hospital, or, you know what, you had five bad claims and we got to give you a plus 15. Yes, ma'am?
Why, why on this page, the banded layer? Why have you not included all of your members?
Because it would be too small to read, trying to put 76 members on a page gets to be difficult.
Or is it because it would throw the numbers off?
No, it doesn't throw the numbers off, because the most important thing to note on this page is when you look at column G, and thanks for asking that question, I'm glad I gave you the $20 to ask me that before we started. Column G shows how volatile those claims are on a per employee-per-month basis. These are all your cancers, your preemie babies, your car accidents, and what we do in the group is we decide to give everyone column H without risk and profit. Everyone agrees that we're going to make catastrophic claims of fixed cost, that just because you had preemie babies here, or you had a couple cancers, or you had a couple kids fall off your bike, you shouldn't get dinged, your whole population shouldn't get dinged because of that. And we know that area goes up and down for each community by year, but we're going to make it a fixed cost element and make sure there's no finger-pointing. And especially when you have retirees also. Retirees tend to be a 225% loss ratio, so they're going to have claims probably over $35,000 every year. So, it's a way to mitigate and make sure that we have a smoother ship than any other community. The member dashboard on col, on page nine that you have is just meant to show we do a report to governance every single month to show, and staff, to show exactly what you, where you stand. We'll be able to show the village where their equity is, a simple loss ratio report on the PPO, a simple loss ratio on the HMO. This was designed by the finance director at the city of Wooddale, who wanted a simple one-page report to give to governance. We also have more substantial reports than we have on our website that the village would have access to. And just so you understand, on page 10, that I wasn't talking out of line about 24 months. When you look at the top of page 10, when you see our PPO renewal, it's not pulled out of thin air. Our lead underwriter comes from Blue Cross Blue Shield. We do all the numbers at Gallagher. The experience at the top shows two years. And this was the renewal from a couple of years ago. So, we think our differentiators in the cooperative are that we're very proactive. We're working with a number of communities on, on Cadillac tax mitigation strategy by showing some internal compensation models that'll keep some of the collective bargaining units whole, yet taking away some benefits in the medical plan to achieve just that and stay under the Cadillac tax. We can port and retain the village's plan design unless staff tells us there are any changes. We're not going to make any changes. We're not going to make any changes to the plan design itself. Deductibles, coinsurance, numbers will port. We have access to information and data on 76 other communities for you, so you have the power of the comparables. We have the purchasing power of all 76 communities and what they demand. And what they demand is that this group be treated as if they're a huge Illinois corporation like a Boeing, a Motorola, United Airlines. We have a dedicated municipal service team. We don't do anything else but, pardon this term, work with the village people. So I'm probably the only broker who will say the words caffer to you in placebo, because I don't do anything else but work with municipalities. We kind of immerse ourselves in your culture and actually the cultures of Valerie, Janelle, and Jeff. We go to the finance directors' conferences, the HR conferences, and the managers' conferences. We're budgetable, stable, flexible, and predictable, which I think I've proven to you in the last couple of minutes. You get full disclosure, and you get the intangibles of working with 76 other communities to solve a problem. And with that many eyes looking at things, you're usually going to end up with a pretty good result. So before we take any questions, I'll turn this over to Mr. Cook, who used to be the finance, excuse me, finance manager and village manager at the Village of Hinsdale to give you his perspective.
Thank you. I just want to, a few comments. One from, going back to Greg, my former position with the Village of Hinsdale and a perspective from a village manager and what IPBC does bring to a community. I was very fortunate. Hinsdale was a member for almost 20 years during my tenure at Hinsdale. Especially as I moved up the ladder from finance director and HR to assistant manager and manager, it gave me a lot of experience and understanding of IPBC and some of the benefits. I think really one of the major benefits is with your employee relations. It gave Hinsdale the ability to work with our employees, to keep them in an atmosphere where there wasn't a lot of change, moving carriers, moving, you could make, IPBC is so flexible that you can make those changes that you need to make to stay in budget, to work with your employees, but don't cause them the chaos of having to move to a new carrier to move to a new network, something that was very, very important. Having that planned flexibility, when we're in union negotiations, it became extremely, extremely important to me. So I knew that if we could come to a deal, they could make it happen for us. We didn't have to pick up the phone and go, "Can we do this?" At a very crucial time. If you're familiar with union negotiations, the last two things are always salary and insurance. And many times, you know, we settle a contract at 10:00 or 11:00 at night, and I knew we had a deal. I didn't have to go back and ask if we could do something, something very important. And what Greg stressed, from the financial point, the stability and the planning aspects. We knew when we put together a five-year operational plan that we could count on the numbers that we were given, that, you know, they may be 1% or 2% variance, but if our financial long-term plan, we knew we weren't going to get hit with a 12% or 15% increase in future years. So those are very key things, I think, from the management side. From executive director's side, I think there's some things that you should know. You are joining, in my opinion, the premier municipal health, self, excuse me, shared service health pool in the state of Illinois, without question. We have 76 members. We're growing. We have a lot of interest right now. It is a very professionally-run organization. And as a member, you are a participatory member. The decisions that are made are not made by Greg or I, they're made by the members. When we do our annual rate setting, they are voted on by the members. How we propose our rates, they are voted on by the members. The members have control of this organization. It's very important. And the organization is very professionally-run. I'm very honored to be the first executive director. This year, we have went out and, from a fiduciary standpoint, sent RFPs out for auditing our accounting work, so we may make sure that we get the best quality service for the best price. It's an organization that I am very proud of to be a part of, and I have to say that it's a great organization, and I encourage you to come along with us. Any questions you have, please?
I actually have a question. You mentioned earlier that the village would maintain Blue Cross Blue Shield, however, it could switch to United Healthcare. Is it only that two options for the village?
The third option is Cigna.
The Cigna.
And in terms of companies, we try to look inside of the pool, we try to pick what we consider the most deeply discounted networks and the networks with the most access. So we give communities those choices right now. Also, remember, there's also total flexibility on plan design. So if the village wanted to move deductibles, co-payments out of pockets, RX co-pays out of pockets, they have that flexibility too.
We have many different villages that have high deductible plans, health savings accounts, HMOs, PPOs, any variety of a plan you can think of. I'm sure we have in the IPBC.
So my understanding is that you mentioned the $2 million sum of savings as you were speaking.
He's a salesman.
And that was with maintaining everything with Blue Cross Blue Shield, is that correct?
Yeah.
So let's say instead of having the Cadillac plan for the village, that we had the Buick plan for the village, would we then save more than $2 million?
Yeah, probably. Because we're going to price appropriately for the plan design changes that the village submits to us.
Okay.
And our goal has been, because if we reach the year 2018, we are penalized for having a Cadillac plan. So we have steps in place every year between now and then to make sure that we don't fall into that category and have any penalty. That certainly, this will make it easier for us to do that, but we have a plan in place to ensure that wouldn't happen even before we considered IPBC.
Okay.
IPBC just helps slow your rate of change.
All right.
But as we are sitting here now, we don't have any exact quotes as to how much this is going to cost us and/or save us.
A tenth more than what you're paying right now, ten through the IPBC. That's a firm quote.
For your renewal.
Okay. And so when your chart indicates the average approved adjustment, asterisk, asterisk, which varies by member?
Yeah. Members can go 10 points up and 10 points down.
Okay, and that's the limitation?
That's the limitation. And usually, what happens is 90% of the members go five points up and five points down. There isn't that much variance. My proposal to the IPBC, which Mr. Cook has heard before, is to limit the bands. So last year was a minus 3.3. The highest anyone could get was a 6.7. The lowest anyone could do is a minus 13.3. My proposal to the IPBC, which Mr. Cook knows I want to present, is to lower those bands five and five. Because we're going to be in PPOs a long time, because the unions just won't let you get rid of them. And since 90% of the groups in the IPBC are within five points of the average every year, we don't have that many outliers.
If I could just interject for a minute, Greg, could you kind of explain to the board how you're able to predict right now that come December, that the village will receive a dividend by being in the pool in September? And how that dividend works in future years? And your ability to predict what our increases will be and the amount we'll receive as far as a dividend in future years?
Right now, last year's dividend to the members, we just closed out the year. The year finished with an 86% loss ratio with a 14% dividend, or 14 cents on the dollar given to every, back to every single member. So if you look at Schaumburg, Schaumburg has a budget of $12 million. They're going to get back 14% of their $12 million. We are working at looking at that loss ratio. We almost think we're generating too much cash, that it's probably too much of a dividend to get. So while we're looking at strategies to maybe get more to a 94% loss ratio, 5% dividend, 2% adjustment, we're going to get there slowly over time. So right now, I don't think the loss ratio in the next year is going to be any different than 86% to 90% for every community. So that probably means Bartlett's looking at anywhere from an 8% to 12% dividend once they join. Because that's what everyone's going to share. I think we're not going to move our loss ratios up that quickly. It's been consistent at an 86 for 24 straight months. And we're still growing. We're looking at adding about 1,000 lives on January 1.
Really, what that kind of means for the village as far as our insurance plan, right now, we're fully insured. And we kind of know that we have a pool of employees and their families that are under what our expected is, as far as our claims. But we pay a fully insured premium every month. When we're under that expected amount of claims, we lose that money. But when we go to a big pool like this, we keep that money. That's what that dividend is. And the more lives, the more municipalities that are in this, spread those catastrophic claims out, and we retain those dollars. And we build it up through the years, and we can use that money to offset our budget or use that money to do other things within the village, instead of just giving it to the insurance carriers and not getting any of it back.
And that's the difference between being a customer and an owner-partner.
And that dividend is calculated based on the aggregate loss rather than the individual loss?
There is a component of the individual loss, because I talked about that self-insured retention of $35,000. So a lot of your dividend comes from there, then a lot of it will come from the common elements of the IPBC. When you look at the way costs are split, 75% of your costs will be at $35,000 and under. 15% of your costs will be in that mid-layer that I talked about, and 10% are admin and stop loss.
Total number of insured for the village?
Right now, there's 165.
165. So we're about in the middle of the pack, if I'm looking at the statistics about, right? I was trying to see if there's any trend, if the smaller communities bear better in this pool than the larger communities. I don't see any.
No. Because I think because of our mid-layer taking those catastrophic claims out, everyone kind of normalizes.
Yeah.
So you'll be at 150, any community over 150 lives can petition for full membership. So if you're asking for full membership, that'll be granted, and you'll be a full voting member.
And then we'll be a full partner. And as an owner/partner, so you won't get paid if we lose money, right? You said you're owner/partners.
We have not had a loss ratio over 100% in the 22 years I've been working with the IPBC.
That's good statistic.
And just in case you're wondering, I joined the IPBC when I was 14, so.
Well, I would echo Trustee Aaron's concern about no red arrows on the individual member five-year history. Because I guess the way that I would look at it is worst-case scenario, you know, what are some of the things that drive a negative experience?
A negative experience, it would only, your negative experience can really only happen in your claims under $35,000, and that's the most predictable area. So when that is 98% of your people and 75% of your cost, it's not hard to predict. So we really don't miss on that number often at all. We miss it maybe on two communities a year. And the worst deficit I've ever seen in a year for any community has been 7%. And when a community joins, they have a full two years to settle any deficit. Other communities that have been in a long time, they've got reserves to be able to handle that deficit. So I've never seen anything above 7%. So that's pretty stable. Usually, the variance is we'll see a 102, 101 loss ratio in that layer, because it is that predictable. It's the catastrophic stuff that really can cause damage to your plan.
I've got a few more, but I don't want to hog the mic.
This passes, do you take over right away? How's that?
Excuse me?
If he passes, does this take over right away?
What, we've already discussed with staff how that transition would all work.
When is our renewal, Jeff? When is our renewal?
Our renewal is December 1st, but we're hoping to join this pool and bring this back to the full board for September 1st.
So it'd be on track?
Yeah.
Either September or October. I'd be more comfortable with October in transitioning, because I think that dividend is kind of important to get your money back. I mean, if there's risk and profit out there between 8% to 12% a month, that's...
$30,000 a month.
That's $30,000 a month for this community.
Is there any immediate premium savings, Jeff?
No.
Is there any changes that we'll be making to the cost-sharing, employee versus village?
Not immediately, but the door is open for the future.
Are the premiums the same? Will they be very comparable?
Extremely comparable. We're talking about a 0.8% increase from where we're at right now.
Less than 1%.
Less than 1%.
So that's immediately, but then what about, not immediately? What about after that?
As far as...
When you actually start seeing the savings?
The IPBC can already predict the savings for future years.
Yeah.
Based upon...
My, my guess is, December 1, with Blue Cross, you're going to get 7%, 8%, 10% increase. So if you want to, you know, looking at a premium basis, looking December on, you're going to save 6%, 7%. That's about their average rates.
Based on, based on the average adjustment that we've heard from staff, we're giving you less than 1%. They're going to walk in with 8. And so that's $240,000 or more, $300,000, close to $300,000.
Can we verify that maybe at the next meeting too, just what the Blue Cross is estimating our actual increase to be? Because we know that, right? They can give us facts.
Yeah.
Usually about 75 days out, so by the earliest year, you're going to get a rate renewal from Blue Cross.
Yeah, we're a little early, but I can tell you that our average increase over the last five years with Blue Cross being fully insured is 7.5%.
Yeah. I've seen 12%, 14% before.
There were 14% about six or seven years ago.
Let's see. So who was the last community to join? Because on here, you said, you said 76, and it says 75 here.
Those are, let's see, the last two, we had...
Schaumburg County.
Winfield.
Winfield, I'm sorry.
Winfield was the last one. We will have two more communities at the August, and probably, maybe three or four before that.
Three or four.
By the end of the year, we think we'll have at least four, or you're up to 80 by year end, and January 1st will probably be about 84, 85 communities.
This is mile number 375 I've driven today. We were in Urbana earlier.
Sorry about that.
Yeah. Urbana agreed to go to resolution in September.
Yep.
And we're working with Parkbridge.
Just a quick question for you. When we asked to review, many board members asked to review this insurance, because it's such a hot topic. Did we only look at this group here, or did we look at other pools?
We don't have a lot of other options for pools. You'll notice in the list of municipalities, that pretty much all our neighbors are the Chicagoland area. I don't really know of any other pools, unless they're smaller pools of smaller municipalities.
Does Gallagher have other pools around the country?
Yes.
And there's an option to pick the best pool?
Because of the Illinois Governor's Governmental Act, you can only join an Illinois pool.
How about some really healthy people down south?
Hey, actually, I want to bring in. That's a great question, because if you look at who's in the house...
DeKalb.
Well, not only that, DeKalb's not that healthy, believe it or not. I like adding, I like adding Metro East St. Louis, because if you look down there, UHC is the powerhouse down there. They bring a lot of discount. And the more we add Metro East St. Louis and turn this into a whole state concern, which we're trying to do with Urbana and Charleston right now, the more powerful the IPBC is in negotiating.
The more money you guys get to play with.
We're paid on a per-capita basis, so, hey, I'm not getting any more, Jane.
I understand the theory, and it's a good one.
And you have no, no...
And it is playing with money.
No buying?
I was going to say, you have no, no plans to take over the VA, right?
We'd be more efficient, I think.
You'd be losing more money.
I think we'd be more efficient.
That's all the questions that I have.
I have a question. Trustee Martin asked you who the last company, or, excuse me, the last entity to join was?
Yeah.
Who was the last entity to leave?
Village of Cary.
Why?
Why? Because they had a board get elected that decided to undo everything that the manager had done in the previous two years. So they had only been in 15 months, and they decided to leave. Now, Village of Cary just handed Gallagher a broker-record letter five months ago, because the new manager said that was a mistake, that they've got nothing but 12%, 15% increases since they left the pool. So I'm going to bring them back in on January 1.
I also think what Trustee Shipman was trying to get at, what are the reasons why a community would leave IPBC? And I think you guys would agree that some of the smaller communities that don't have the large members might leave because they don't have a full vote at the table.
Correct.
And that's one of the reasons why communities leave.
That's probably a nice way of saying the follow-up questions that came into my head. That's probably a nice way of saying the follow-up questions that came into my head, yes.
Yeah, the other community that left before Cary was Riverside. Riverside was 40 employees. They got a Blue Cross insured quote that was going to save them 3%. They lost a 10% HMO dividend, so I didn't see where they saved anything.
Is there any other, I'm sorry?
I'm done for now.
Is there a reason why we have to look intergovernmental on a pool? I know these pools exist all over, and with 160 bodies, there's got to be other places to look as well.
There is one other municipal pool. It's run on the North Shore by a broker called GCG. You would have to accept their plan design, which would throw you into grievance.
That's the salesman's answer. Jeff, did we look into it?
Yeah, no, it's a fact. He'll find that out.
Okay. No, I didn't mean to disrespect. I just meant that I'd rather have a...
It's only, it's about 1/6 the size of us. The biggest members are Will Madden and Mundalian, then Lincolnshire, Lincolnwood, Illinois Crime Lab, Bannock, Burn, Kennelworth.
So those are the municipal?
Yeah, that's the only other municipal pool in the state.
I'm talking about all pools. Is there a reason why we have to stay in a municipal pool?
Oh, it's probably because of plan design.
Because what?
Because of plan design.
That doesn't make any sense to me.
Well, we, because of our contracts with our unions, we have to have a certain plan design that meets the obligation of our union contracts. And because all of these municipalities have police and fire, we're kind of all in the same boat, and structure our benefit plan around those contracts. And we can tweak here and there as we negotiate. But to go off to, I think, some, you know, corporate-type of pools, they might not have that type of benefit plan that we need.
But it's not really something that we've looked into?
I don't believe it would be.
You can't do it with corporate, private-sector entities, because that's not allowed by the state. And joining an association, an association probably wouldn't take a public entity group, and you probably don't want to be involved in a school pool, because you're going to tell, you're going to tell Public Works, you know, "Hey, staple on both sides of the sign if you have a problem with them," and tell their story walking. Well, the school people would rather cave and not have a strike, so they're going to give away the ship. You don't want to be involved with school people, whose cost per employer higher than yours.
I knew all the answers to those. I just wanted to make sure that everybody...
All right. And I have to work with school, I work with school pool people that are a floor above me.
Come on, quit beating up the schools.
I'm not trying to beat them up. I just think municipal finance directors and managers are way ahead of the game.
Oh, good comment. Jeff, the Japan for that.
What is their return?
Well, before we move forward with this, I think I'd like to see some more specific numbers. So maybe we can come back and talk about this a little bit later.
I agree.
Some more specific information.
Specific...
I think it's, you know, it's one thing to beat the curve on the, on cost increases, it's another thing to actually decrease the village's expenditure. So I understand they're both saving money, but I think there's still that distinction there. So I'd like to see what the projections are for the premiums and for the savings, and how we can articulate, how we break down that $2 million.
We could absolutely do that.
I would want to know, before we delay that much, what effect that may have. Let's make sure we know both sides of this equation here. If we say, okay, we're going to push this out, we're already missing one meeting, right? We're going to push it out to the last meeting in August. Our deadline is September.
The IPBC would like to get us in the pool between September and October, so that we can share in the $80,000 dividend.
Okay, so moving at one more discussion will not jeopardize that.
The approval process from IPBC is that it goes to the executive board. Executive board will make the, will actually approve the application. The executive board meets August 14th, and then does not meet till September 28, I believe is the date. Then the following one is in November, so they meet every other month.
With our current board schedule, we would, no, the first one in August is canceled. So then, while they're meeting August 14th, their next IPBC, next meeting is September 28th. We have to go in front of the IPBC board and get approved by the pool also. So that would be September 28th.
Well, this isn't something that we should be rushing. I mean, I understand the dividend issue, but, you know, we're looking at spending about $20,000, $22,000 an employee for insurance, and, you know, this impacts our budget.
It does, and there's no reason why we have to. If you look at those dates, we can bring this back to the next committee meeting with more specific numbers, which would be the end of August. And if the board wanted to take it forward for a final vote, that's the first meeting in September, and that still has it on time for the meeting that you gentlemen are talking about, if I'm not correct. So I think the answer is, you're absolutely right. We should not rush into it, and we don't have to.
Okay. Any further questions or comments?
If everything passes, then we can get a, at the 28th.
You're really asking two questions. You're asking how you want to do things internally versus how you want your benefits paid for and delivered. How you want your benefits paid for and delivered is what we talked about. What you're talking about internally is more of a decision between you and staff.
But some of what we do internally depends on the timing of your meetings.
Well, hey, it's only $30,000 a month.
All right, if there aren't any other questions or comments, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, you got this evening, Mr. Rankin?
Yes, that's it, Mr. President.
Thank you, Chairman Rankin. Final item on the, near the whole agenda, under the Police Department is Chairman Shipman.
Thank you, Mayor. Sometime in the past, we had, as a body, discussed the possibility of bringing a local administrative adjudication or local hearings to the village. We asked staff to look into that, and Chief Williams has put together a memorandum, which all of you have in front of you, and I believe he's going to brief it for us. I'll open it up for questions, chief.
Thank you, trustee Shipman. As you said, several months ago, my staff was tasked with looking into feasibility, effectiveness, efficiency, potential drawbacks to a shift in philosophy towards local adjudication for minor village-wide offenses. So while I facilitate this, this program would actually impact many of the directors, planning and zoning, community development, and the building codes as well. What we looked at is that the shift could actually take up hearings on quasi-criminal violations that don't rise at a level of misdemeanors or felonies and don't belong in actual criminal court. Our officers are quite often issuing those type of citations through local ordinances. There's building code violations, parking tickets, property maintenance violations, and health code violations, as well as zoning violations, that would fall under this auspice. My staff went out and did many field trips. We looked at other villages who were very comfortable with this concept. We watched the process. We talked with their staff. And the pros were described as it's a very timely process. It doesn't get carried on for months through an overly burdened Cook County Circuit Court system. There's a reduction in cost for litigation and personnel being required to attend various meetings. It tends to be more convenient for the actual citizens, who may be in violation of a code, rather than driving up to this Third Circuit Court of Cook County. They can stay here in their own town, and there are no additional court fees levied against the violator by the Circuit Court of Cook County. In other words, it cuts them out of the levying of the fees. So it's actually a potential reduction in fees, and we wouldn't be sharing violations with Cook County. It would all come to the Village of Bartlett. So those were some of the advantages. And Brian Maraz was nice enough to draft a potential ordinance, and we just thought it would be a nice opportunity to open this up for discussion and get the opinion of the board and its philosophy on this potential.
Thank you. A couple of quick things. We talked about the, or you talked about the quasi-criminal or kind of non-criminal local ordinance violations. What are some examples of that?
I could give you a few examples of that. It's a misdemeanor to commit a battery, but we have a local ordinance called fighting. So if you, if we go into a bar disturbance, and we have a bunch of people committing batteries against each other, but they don't want to sign complaints against each other, we can still impart a culture of non-tolerance towards violence in public places. And even though we don't have their signature against each other for a Class A misdemeanor, my officers can initiate a fighting local ordinance violation, which comes with a fine. And it's just a way of the village being able to maintain its culture of tolerance, rather than having to go in front of the Cook County criminal courts.
Could we also include some of those things, like curfew violations?
Curfew violations are a perfect example of that.
Noise violations.
Truancy, noise violations, forms of disorderly conduct, those type of things.
If a person goes...
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry. Would high schoolers that were fighting go in that, too?
That's correct, yeah. Any disturbances or issues of violence that occur at the high school, by working with their administration and the court liaison officer, we could make a determination that rather than make this a criminal offense, we could bring it in front of the local adjudication process.
If a person were to go through this process, and to be found liable or guilty, whichever razorology we decided to go with, they would still have some right to appeal?
That's absolutely right. They could appeal it to the Cook County 3rd District and have their, and be heard in the actual Cook County court system.
And I would think one of the things that we might be losing with this, by gaining more local control, we'd be losing, one thing that came to my mind was the benefit of probation, if you will. Because we're not, you know, if a person weren't found guilty in the criminal courts or in the county courts, we'd lose some of the advantages of having somebody on probation. But most of these offenses, I'm guessing, aren't the type of things that we would try and get probation for. Is that correct?
That's absolutely a good point. There are some batteries, or thefts, or crimes that we wouldn't bring in front of the local adjudication, because we want the alternative to a probation or a tight leash, so to speak, into the future. And so those wouldn't be appropriate for local adjudication.
So are officers going to take into consideration a person's history, and their age, and their experience, and everything else, as to whether or not they charge them locally, or go ahead and push them off into grown-up court, if you will?
It's the totality of circumstances involving the incident, the age, the past, the history. And quite frankly, the criminal courts are very burdened with severe misdemeanors and felonies. And to overburden them with citizens who could just be charged locally, it's better for the whole system, it's better for the citizen, and yet. But again, it is determined upon the history and the circumstances surrounding the incident.
All that being said, though, this is not an opportunity to try and make more arrests, to write more tickets or anything. This is just a better way of processing what is generally the same number of arrest tickets. Is that correct?
Well, from my department's perspective, that, I don't want to speak on behalf of other departments, but from my point of view, that's absolutely correct. This is not a generator of offenses. It would be only another way to mitigate offenses that have been brought to our attention or that we've become aware of. There would be no opportunity to create more violations. That's correct.
But it could be, the perception could be there.
That's absolutely right. That's, that, when I was contemplating potential drawbacks, people could perceive this, and some people's perceptions are the realities, is that it's just an opportunity for us to go and find more offenses. That wouldn't, that wouldn't bear itself out in fact, but it's potential for that somebody might have that perspective. You're correct.
And as I thought through this, I think perception's a very good word, that this is one of the things that we have to be very upfront about.
Absolutely.
If we were to move forward with it. And we have to address those types of concerns or perceptions, because the perception could also be that, well, no longer is it some judge in Rolling Meadows who lives in Burbank at night making the decisions. It's now, quote-unquote, "the village" deciding whether or not you are culpable for whatever you've been charged with, whether it be a criminal offense, or a zoning violation, or any of those things.
Well, on your behalf, that was my greatest concern, to be honest with you. Right now, we send people to a off-campus, very adjudicatory, big court system. And quite frankly, that has very little, if anything, to do with village government, other than my staff testifying. When you bring it on campus, there is a potential for, geez, my village is doing this to me. So, yeah, I can see that concern from, there would be a slight potential shift in perception that you may be concerned with, and I totally would be...
I agree with you. I think as long as we're all aware of that going into this, that's...
If I could interject on that point, and I'm sorry to interrupt, but I have a great deal of experience with administrative adjudication. And I think going into this, if we are going to expand the scope of the program, we all need to understand that as elected officials, when a constituent calls us and says, "Hey, I got a ticket for my grasp being too long. Can you do something about it?" In order for this system to not be a kangaroo court, we need to allow it, we need to commit to have that system be independent. So the answer always has to be no, just as if someone called me and said, "Hey, can you talk to your friend, the judge, and fix my case?" The answer has to be no. So if we're going to do this, it has to be independent, and we should be committed to that.
And again, I've had probably almost as much experience, although from a different perspective, as trustee Rankin. And I would say that from my perspective, it's also been very successful, and...
May I make a comment about fixing tickets? There was a trustee not too long ago, Jerry Faber, and he had one of his really good friends call him up and say, "Hey, I got this $10 parking ticket. Can you fix it?" Jerry said, "Sure." Grabbed the ticket from him, came over to Village Hall and paid it. He looked like a...
I know of several trustees who've done that, so I don't...
Not a good thing to do. I agree, but that's the way he handled it.
I don't have any other questions at this point. I'll open it up to the board.
If I may, I'd like to interject one thing. Chief, you had mentioned something about the perspective. I'm just wondering, and bear with me, because I'm putting this together, you know, the second time I go to traffic court, and I've been on probation before because of speeding, the second time I show up, the judge looks at that and says, "Well, you're back again. Now, we're going to impose a bigger fine." If I do something in the Village of Bartlett and come to the local court, I'm sure I'm going to get a lesser fine, there won't be any court costs, and, you know, maybe it won't cost me as much. If I do the same thing two or three times and keep coming back to the Bartlett Court, what are the repercussions?
Well, that's a good point. If it's not getting the compliance sought, and that's really what the system's looking for, is voluntary compliance. And if the lesson isn't learned, and they thumb their nose, and they keep getting in the same fights in the same bars, well, that's called a criminal long-form complaint misdemeanor, and you get to go to the judge and get put on probation, and have elevated fines, and potential fear of jail sentences. So that is something we can always go back to. So the way I see this is a kind of a user, again, people's perception is reality, but from actual factual reality, it's more of a user-friendly environment, where we're trying to get a more localized voluntary form of compliance.
So the red light ticket, doesn't go on your record, but you still have to pay the fine?
Chief, out of all the cases you have, say, right now, not an increase or decrease, how much, how many, what percent would fall under that could be handled through this?
That's a great question. My officers write a lot of local ordinance violations. They do. Just right now, they're all going to the criminal court building up in Cook County.
20%, 50%?
Boy, you know what? I can, I don't want to guess. I could find those numbers for you and bring them back to you. But I can tell you, my officers, again, as trustee Shipman described, look at the totality of circumstances, and if they're, if it's a first-time offender, or they look at the age, they look at the background, and if there isn't much history, it's going on local ordinances, just because we, it's a gracious culture that this village has. We don't long for everybody criminally, because we don't think that is really the philosophy of the organization, to be honest with you.
Next question. How many days do you think? Two days a week? Or how often would this occur, the hearings?
It would be monthly. It wouldn't be, yeah, it wouldn't be...
A month?
Yeah, that's what we would be shooting for.
Okay.
But it would be here instead of Rolling Meadows?
I'm sorry?
But it would be here instead of Rolling Meadows?
Keep in mind that this is not for moving traffic violations.
That's correct.
So those are still going to be in Rolling Meadows. There's no jurisdiction or power or authority to handle moving traffic violations here, even if they're written as a local ordinance violation. So it's, if it's traffic, it's the equipment-type things, all those fighting-type misdemeanors, curfew that the chief talks about, those are not, obviously, moving violations under the Illinois Vehicle Code. the Illinois Vehicle Code. And then you're talking about zoning code ordinance violations or building code violations that, right now, go to housing court. And again, the compliance type that we're seeking there. And so those would be here. So all of those, zoning and building code would come here, and the non-moving traffic, and then the minor quasi-criminal-type cases would come here. In any case, there's always the ability to take it to the circuit court. You don't have to go through here.
Let me just make a comment. We've looked at this peripherally a few times over the years, and that perception of people having to come to the Village Hall and get dinged by something was a concern. But as we went through some of the additional issues, I think that there are, the benefits outweigh whatever perceptual issue would be there. Now let's take code enforcement, Jim and Brian's area. We have a very difficult time getting the courts to take our code enforcement issues seriously. And that is usually to the frustration of the neighbors, who cannot understand why month after month, there's a continuation, and this issue isn't getting fixed, it gets fixed, excuse me, and the next, you know, week or the week after that, another problem is back, and we're back out there trying to deal with it. I think that this will resolve those issues much more quickly, and I think that is to the great benefit of most of the citizens in this community. I also think that being able to come and dispose of those issues right here in town will be a whole lot easier for people than driving off to the courthouse in DuPage or down in, in Rolling Meadows. So, you know, I think that first issue that you raised, Trustee Shipman, is a concern. I think that, that the benefits of this really do outweigh that.
And do they outweigh it financially? Or do we have any sort of feasibility aspect?
You know what? I don't have a real good feel for that, and I don't think that we're counting on much of a financial increase at all. If we do, we'll track it, but that certainly isn't any motivation at all, and I'm not counting on it.
From what I could read in here, apparently...
Oh, except for staff time certainly will be...
Well, that's what I'm saying. From getting at here is what I can read, apparently, we can only hire an attorney with three years' experience. Is that state law?
Yes, it is.
So unfortunately, we can't hire a social worker or a pastor or somebody that could do it a little more reasonably, maybe. Not that attorneys are giving...
Volunteer?
...service.
We'll each take turns.
That one.
I'm not even going to comment on it.
The chief's car is in town.
I can't win commenting on that. So I'm just concerned...
He's got a lot of experience.
Yeah, I'm just concerned that we're going to end up, it's going to be a trade-off, and that, yeah, there may be more convenience, people doing it here, but we're going to end up paying staff, we're going to call that, just as much as we would have received or paid out to go to Cook County.
Right, but I think the purpose was to solve some of the ordinance issues amongst the townspeople that Cook County doesn't want to hear.
Not if it's, not if it's going to cost us more money, though.
Whoa. Len's going to pay a fine.
We don't know that.
I can tell you through my experience, when you go to Cook County, you're going with a lot of other municipalities, and those dockets get filled very quickly, and they spill over into months and months and months, and going back on monthly basis is prioritively being heard for the first time, much less the third time. So that's staff time. That's people, that's your staff not being in town, but sitting up in court. So there's a real expense with that. I can just tell you, these were the same concerns we had when we did local adjudication for our tow hearings. And, and we didn't promise a lot of money on that either, but it, that has come, that's bringing in over $100,000 a year to the Village of Bartlett, so. And we didn't promise any money on that either.
This would cover all three counties, correct?
Yes, when it's written under a local ordinance, it would cover all three counties.
Okay, because I keep seeing Cook County on here.
That's correct.
Did we add, did we not incorporate part of the IVC into our local ordinance?
I'm sorry, Trustee Carbonaro, I didn't hear that.
Did we not incorporate part of the IVC, minor violations, speeding, those kind of things?
No, you're not allowed to hear moving violations in local adjudication, simply because the Secretary of State holds the power of the privilege of driving, and they want to hear those cases in court.
Parking.
Parking, parking equipment.
Parking you can hear. Yes, that's correct. Parking can be heard here.
I'd like to make a couple of points and respond to Trustee Camer to make things very, very clear. Okay. First, let me preface this by saying, I'm an administrative hearing officer for four communities here in DuPage County. Okay? So I've probably heard thousands of these cases. Number one, money. Right now, when we take our cases to the circuit court, there is an entire layer of government that is siphoning off the fine money, goes to the circuit court and constituent governmental entities. Under the administrative adjudication, we get to keep all of the fine money, we get to control the fines. If we find that $25 is too much or too little, this board can reduce that, or we can increase it. The experience of the hearing officer, your point is very well taken. I understand what you're saying about attorneys. You know, having a social worker would be, is certainly an idea. Here's the thing. We have to have due process at these hearings. Due process is just as important as independence. So it shouldn't be the village doing anything to anybody, it should be the hearing officer. Right? We have control over who this hearing officer is. If we find that the hearing officer is not working out for us, is coming up with hinky rulings, then we get rid of the hearing officer. That doesn't happen in the circuit court. We can substitute out, and I'll let Brian talk a little bit more about that. But, but in the circuit court, the problem is, and with all due respect to my, to the judges that I appear in front of routinely, they have a lot of cases, and a lot of them are very different. So suddenly, a junk and debris case that is very important to us and very important to our residents is not as important to a judge, who might also hear things like, you know, DUI, domestic battery, things like that. So, and so finally, I think if we have a good hearing officer, I know what I do when I conduct my hearings, is I give everybody a fair hearing. I make sure that I listen to the residents that come in and complain about their neighbors. So we can't have a very sensitive system, and I think it needs to be. And I think we should all take turns going to these administrative hearings to make sure that the hearing officer is what we want him to be, because really, he does represent the soul, the due process of our community. So I think that's important. And with that, I will shut up.
So any trustee with over three years plus you've served will take turns. There, we're saving the lawyer's expense.
I imagine that the attorney's fees are relatively modest for an administrative hearing.
Where do we go with this next, then?
We would, if the board would direct us to do so, put the ordinance on the next board agenda and begin to set up the process accordingly.
We wouldn't, we'd have an effective date in the future, because we'd have to work through the procedure and the timing things, but... Is it possible to know what kind of figures we're talking about as far as estimates of how much money comes in through Cook County and that kind of stuff, or not?
Sure, we can do that.
Do we know any community that has started this and then stopped?
No.
Okay.
Everyone's gone the other way.
Yeah, the many, the many we looked at, they're very happy with the process. I'm not saying that that hasn't occurred, I'm just not aware of it.
Is this something that you would recommend, Chief?
Chairman, do you have anything else?
I do have a couple of things. Thank you, Mayor. Okay. Chief, what's our maximum fine amount under local ordinance?
Local ordinance, it depends on the offense.
Let's go with possession of alcohol by minor.
I don't know off the top of my head, but I think it's, some of those go as high as potentially $750 down.
Yeah, it's kind of standard in the industry, I think it's $750. So, potentially speaking, what we're talking about here is, rather than arresting a 20-year-old kid who makes a mistake and has a beer in public, and making him go in front of a court and having a criminal record that he either has to have expunged or get saddled with the rest of his life, he can come here, and if it's egregious enough, pay an extra hefty super duty fine, but it never ends up on his, quote unquote, "permanent criminal record." Is that correct?
That's exactly correct.
And is that in keeping, Madam Administrator, a little bit more with what we consider to be kind of the flavor, the personality of our community? We want to kind of take care of people that way a little bit? Is that a fair summation?
Well, you know, I think it is. I think that gives an option and a benefit to a kid who's done that in this community, that if we did not do local adjudication, would not have those kinds of options.
And conversely, if we're using this as we, as you've proposed, in some of the other manners, for instance, a neighbor whose house is just in total disrepair, and they're completely ignorant of the village's requests and ultimate demands to bring it up to date, and the neighbors are up in arms, that adjudication, that hearing officer would have the ability to fine that person $750, correct me if I'm wrong, Brian, per day, for those violations. Is that correct?
He has the power to do that. He can have him also post a bond to show that there's compliance. If there is compliance, he can, you know, wipe out those fines.
And so while on one hand, we're talking about a velvet glove, we're talking about that velvet glove covering a steel fist. So there's, there's real teeth in this, but we can do it in a nice way if we need to.
I don't want to speak on behalf of Jim, but I know that sometimes when we send people to those type of things, the quality of the home, the quality of upkeep, and we send them to Cook County, that's not always advantageous to the village, because they go there and they see the disinterest of the court, and it actually emboldens the violator to be worse rather than better. So it would be, it would be nice for Jim's staff to have an opportunity to come in here and have direct local concern over the issue, and at least have some interest in the neighborhood's concerns.
And so while it was your research and kind of your project, this is certainly not just a police matter, this is also...
Oh, clearly not.
Code enforcement, engineering, potentially, public works.
I think this is clearly advantageous to all departments, and it would be no less advantageous to zoning and building.
And in your research and what we've talked about, and I think Trustee Ranky addressed this, we don't have any concerns about this actually negatively impacting us from a financial standpoint. Is that correct?
We haven't been able to find that concern, no.
All right.
I can say, in talking to several towns that do this and hearing officers, it's not a huge moneymaker. The money is in what you're already doing, which is in the administrative toes. So we've already done that. So now you're just looking at this portion. But you're not going to lose money. It's not going to cost more. We just don't want to, you know, predict that, you know, or that that be a basis for the decision. It's not a big moneymaker, but it's not a loser.
It's true benefit is what it gets to the residents and it gives us that local control.
That's correct.
That's all that I had. Was there any other questions?
Yes. Would the hearing officer be able to hand out community service?
Yes, that's in the ordinance.
Okay, because, I mean, someone caught vandalizing, that's what I would like to see.
Yes. And let's be clear, we're not talking about community service coming back to the Village Hall and doing things. I knew our administrator was going to have a heart attack.
No, they'd have to go...
They go to, you know, other places and have to show that they've done work, and a certain number of hours of community service, and that's then brought back to the administrative logic.
Madam Administrator, where does this go now? Or Chief?
This would go to the board, the ordinance would go to the board for a full vote.
Let's do that unless there's objections. Let's do that.
Thank you, Chairman.
Further, Mayor, thank you.
We'll do that.
Chairman.